Called order, the Board of County Commissioners Work Session for April 19th, 2016. Welcome, everybody. Please join us for the Pledge Allegiance and salute your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the vision of the work we present to the gentleman of our country.
We do have the Senator. We do have the Senator. Okay. So, the first item on the agenda is to approve the work session agenda. And I see we have the Senator here today on county reports. I'm assuming you're busy, Senator, and you'd like to give your report sooner rather than later? Do you want to watch it all? Well, your pleasure, whatever you'd like. Okay, so just let's approve the agenda. We'll go ahead and move the county report, my county report up to right after the approval of the agenda. So, move second.
Second.
I'll go with the favor, see if I can stand aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So, really exciting along the agenda will be my county report, which I'm yielding my time to the Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission, staff and elected officials. I always appreciate the opportunity to come in here to give an update on the legislative session. And as you're aware, the legislative session was a challenging one. It kept many of you busy having to go up there quite a bit to make sure that projects were moving along, legislation that would have impacted in a positive or negative way the county. I felt that you had really good representation, so I appreciate that. As we know, going into this legislative session, we had, expected around August of 2015, we expected we were going to have about $233 million additional dollars that would go in. And my hopes was that it was going to help plug in the gap before we hit the recession. Unfortunately, with the prices of oil and gas, that was a big discussion throughout the session, it just didn't happen. And we ended up coming out with about $20 to $30 million of new revenue, which is hardly anything. When you look at all the needs across the state, it was a real concern. So, nonetheless, that was what we dealt with. We're still dealing with that. You can see at the gas pump that the prices are starting to rise just a little bit, and that helps with our state budget. But it's not nearly the level that we're needing to. So, the question out there now is, are we going to need a special session? Are we going to have to come in and readjust budgets? We're not sure at this point. It kind of looks at this point that that won't happen until later in the year, if, in fact, that it does happen. We were fortunate that we were able to have Caporalay, and I know that Caporalay was something that was requested by the county. And again, you guys do such a good job as a county, making sure that your audits are in place, making sure that it's presented so that way we can understand it and move forward on that. And I think that was a real benefit. Congratulations on, I know you're going to move forward on your substance abuse center, Tucasa, I believe is the name of it. It's definitely needed, and so I'm glad that all the work and all the years of putting this together is moving forward in that direction. We do have, coming up, I would like to be able to meet with the Commission to kind of get an update on where we're at, specifically with colonialists' dollars. And when we look with the colonialist funding that's out there, I want to see what products we have, because this is an area that's consistently under attack. And I can see why, because it's money that comes to the southern communities. You only have two senators who represent really the whole southwest region, from Luna County all the way to Catrim. And it's really difficult when you're, you have many more legislators who come from the more populated areas who would like those dollars. But fortunately, we've been able to have those in there. But I want to make sure that any projects we have going forward, that we have those defined as well as possible. When we look and see our ICIP, I do appreciate the work that's done there as well. I know there's adjustments that take place with that. But now that the substance abuse center is on its way and moving along, what I would like to see is what the next priority is, because I know that's been the priority for the last couple of years. I'm hoping that the dollars for the roof, the road department roof, have been expended. At this point, Mr. Chairman, do we know where those dollars are?
I had agreement about two months ago.
Right, we just signed that agreement. Everything's in place. They were holding off a little bit because we had a little bit of a windy season since it's a roofing project. It's ready to move forward. It's just they're kind of waiting on the wind to die down a little bit. It's ready to go. And we were able to put a little bit of county money with that to do the entire roof. What we asked for was just part of it. So, we'll be able to complete the entire roof.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chairman, are there any grant agreements that have not come to the county? Are we still awaiting grant agreements from the Department of Finance?
Projects for, no, we have, for everything that's been funded, we've received grant agreements.
Great, thank you. And I think this is a real testament to the work that was done when everyone went up there on Grant County Day specifically, and really got the attention of the Department of Finance, that there's too many grant agreements that are not getting out to the communities and dollars aren't flowing. My biggest concern, and the reason I ask this, is because as we get ready to move into a special session possibly, and trying to find and scramble for dollars, I want to make sure none of our communities have any dollars that are lingering out there that could easily be brought back in to help shore up the state budget. So, it sounds like we're moving along, and I'm glad for that. I know that there was some legislation that was there that, Mr. Chairman, all the commissioners worked really hard to make sure that you had a voice in that, and that would have changed the way the gross receipts were done for the counties. And I haven't heard any discussion yet, but we just are barely in the beginning of our interim committees. I'm sure there's going to be more discussion there. Please keep me informed of what I can do to assist, because a healthy state government is reliant on a healthy local government. And I think if you take out the feet from local governments, obviously, the state is going to struggle. So, I see that, and I appreciate that. I also appreciated the work that you did on the Grant County Regionalized Water Project. I know that it may be something that we may not have always agreed on how we can fund that, but I think what we agreed upon is the need for that. And working together, trying to find a way to assist all of our communities and our county is going to be beneficial. So, thank you. Thank you for working with me on that and trying to find a solution of how we can make that a reality. With that, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission, I stand for any questions that you may have and/or any input that you have as we move forward in this next legislative session.
Just real quick on a little bit of input. I know in the last week of April, New Mexico Association of Counties Tax Committee is meeting, so we'll have a better idea of what's coming out in Mac anyway. As soon as I get done with that, I will give you a holler and go over it with you. I think that one of the lingering questions was in the paper this last week, the Department of Health's management of Fort Baird Hospital, since we own the building and still are on the, you know, on the bond payments. So, if you could just kind of clarify what's going on there for us, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. And I appreciate you bringing that up, because that is an impact not only to the people that we serve, the residents there, but it is an economic driver for our community. There's been ongoing issues and concern with the facility, and I want to be specific as far as, I believe Grant County is safe as far as on the obligation you have. My concern has been on the operational side. And I think that when you have patient safety that's at risk, and you have understaffing, turnover that's been taking place, the amount of dollars that we appropriate to the Department of Health for all of our state facilities, we want to make sure we get the best return on our investment. And right now, it doesn't seem like that's happening. And Fort Baird is just an example of the other state facilities that there's concerns there. I wanted to bring attention to it, and I wanted to make sure that we have an independent audit or independent review that can look at every single area and can give an honest evaluation of what's taking place at Fort Baird, what's taking place at other state facilities, and let's fix this. It's not something that we're going in and contradiction or trying to take anybody out. It's trying to bring people together so we can have a facility that remains in Grant County and facilities across the state that aren't ever going to be taken under the Department of Justice, as we've seen historically within our Fort Baird facility. So, at this point, I'm confident that the Department of Health is going to hear the call. They and their comments have understood it and basically realize that there's concerns there. When you look and see the amount of dollars that are appropriated and the huge amount of dollars that it goes specifically out for contract nursing, I think that's a concern, because we want to make sure that we can have compensation there for all of our staff, whether it's CNAs, to custodians, to nurses, that we have that compensation that's competitive. Right now, that's not taking place, yet it's not because there's a lack of dollars. It's because of where those dollars are being chosen to be spent. I'd rather have money utilized with our nurses, with our CNAs, with people who are going to stay in our community and contribute to our community and have those dollars be utilized for that. So, there's ongoing discussions. My biggest call is I wanted to make sure that we recognize and realize that the employees of Fort Baird are doing the best they can, but they need some help. And that at the same time is that if we really want to make adjustments and corrections to this, just bring in an independent review and get an honest look at what's taking place there.
Okay, please, Senator.
First of all, Senator, I want to thank you for your support in the Tucasa. And it was not only just the money part, but the guidance that you gave us for those three years before we were there and ready. Your guidance was valuable, and that's the reason it was successful, and I just want to thank you. Next thing I want to bring up, talking about Fort Baird, is that one of the issues that I have, and I think it's a concern of the citizens, is Yucca Lodge. Several years ago, they brought Yucca Lodge into the hospital itself and swallowed up their budget. And as they go, then Yucca Lodge goes now. And so, if we kind of keep that in mind, that we want to try to protect Yucca Lodge, because it's a real value as far as inpatient. And like we had talked to you before, the inpatient is something Tucasa struggles with because of the funding for it, and it's not sustainable, because there is no funding as far as Medicaid is concerned. And lastly, is the Medicaid issue. Reading in the paper the other day, the Journal, is the issues that they have as far as the cuts and such is concerned. One of the things we're going to be depending on heavily for us as far as the Tucasa is the funding is sustainable, a lot of that has to do with Medicaid. A lot of those individuals who are going to be going into it are people who can't afford private insurance and such. So, those three issues or two issues, I'd appreciate you keeping an eye on it for us. But once again, thank you so much for what you've done for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall. I'm glad you mentioned Medicaid, because it is a huge concern that could have a tremendous impact on our community. I know, Mr. Cunningham, I'm sure you're going to speak on the hospital side of it, but when you're $88 million short, which we are right now in Medicaid, that's huge, because you multiply that times three and basically, because you get a three to one dollar match on Medicaid dollars. So, it really is a tremendous impact. Doesn't only affect those that are receiving the services, it affects those that are providing the services. And we have providers who are having to leave the state, because those reimbursements aren't coming in. It really does continue that spiraling effect of New Mexico. So, glad you brought that up, and that's a tremendous concern that we're going to have to be dealing with this year.
Senator, I'd like to echo the other commissioners, and thank you for the open door policy you always have there in Santa Fe. When we go up there, you really tended it to us, and we really do appreciate it. I did want to bring up a future project, and it seems we've got all the regional project for the Twin Sister Creek area. We've got all of the municipalities on board now, and it looks like everyone's pretty happy with, you know, the last meeting we had. We all met at our Eco Watershed Group meeting, and it went very well. We've got Baird, Hurley, Santa Clara, and of course, the counties behind that project now. And we're going to be going to you and asking for help on that also. And hopefully, with your guidance, we can complete this project as soon as possible. Again, it's the Twin Sister Creek Regional Project is what we're calling it, and it's to reuse the fluent waters coming out of the Baird system. So, we're excited to get this off its feet. Santa Clara has received a $100,000 grant for the engineering and so forth. So, we're going to get this thing started, and like you said, with your guidance, we really do appreciate any help you can help us out with.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Ramos. If you can just clarify, and I want to learn more of that, so thank you for mentioning that. Who would own that project? Would it be under the county's ICIP, or would it be under Santa Clara's ICIP?
We've actually been, we've actually had it on our ICIP for the past few years, but it hasn't been at the very top, because we had other priorities at the time. But we will put on ours, and I believe the others, Santa Clara's going to put it on their top three for next year, according to the mayor. So, we're going to keep working on this, and hopefully, we can have better answers for you next time.
Okay, thank you.
Senator, thank you for coming. We always appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate each of you as well. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. We'll talk about the purpose of the meeting today. The general purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed in the next regular meeting for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution 1601, we welcome the public to attend. However, there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. So, at this time, we'll review the April 21st, 2016 regular meeting agenda. Charlene?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, first item is the minutes, which are included in your books for your review. Moving on, financial reports, approve/disapprove April 18th, 2016 expenditure report. Linda, would you go over the highlights of that, please?
Yes, I will, Charlene. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have an expenditure report for your approval for the period of March 14th, 2016, to current. That report has AP checks totaling $2,430,284.93. And included in this amount is a check to Engineers Incorporated, and it's for services for the North Hurley Road and Rosedale Road Colonial Projects and for the North Hurley Waste Water Project. The total of that check is $67,824.70. A check to Stoven Construction, and this is for payment number five and number six for the Conference Center remodel. That check is for $587,823.39. There's a check to Riot Express Fleet Services for February and March fuel charges, a total of $32,633.27. A check to the New Mexico Human Services Division, and this is for the third quarter of the Safety Net Care Pool payment, and that's for a total of $83,137.72. A check to the New Mexico State University, and this is for the first and second quarters, I'm sorry, the second and third quarters of fiscal year 2016 for the COAP Extension Services, and that's for a total of $34,000. A check to Dement Electric, this is for the North Hurley Waste Water Project, and that's for a total of $60,929.24. A check to JNS Plumbing for the North Hurley Waste Water Project, and this is a total of $52,260.38. A check to the High Desert Humane Society, and this is for the Animal Control Services for January through March 2016, and this is for $15,495. A check to Artesia Fire Equipment, this is for air packs and fire equipment for the Cliff Hila Volunteer Fire Department, and that's a total of $95,352. Also included into this expenditure report approval is payroll checks for pay periods six, seven, and eight, and that's a total of $608,563.8. So, the grand total for this expenditure report is $338,848.1.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, business. Item C will be a proclamation recognizing the Cobree High School Boys' Champion Wrestling Item D, approve/disapprove proclamation declaring April 2016 as Start By Believing This is a public awareness campaign for ending violence against women. Item E, approve/disapprove proclamation declaring May 14th, 2016 as Give Grandly, Give Local Day. Item F, New Mexico Association of Counties Presentation to Highlight Services to the County. The Executive Director, Steve Koppelmann, and current Board President Sharon Stover will be here.
They will dig out?
That's spring weather. Item H, approve/disapprove New Mexico Aging and Long Term Services Department, 2017, Severance Tax Bond Capital Outlay Request Application. Terry has compiled an application for to purchase vehicles in the amount of $76,000.
Did you give G?
Oh, no, I didn't. Sorry, I skipped right over G. Grant County Assessors Office Valuation Maintenance Program Update. Do you have anything you need to add at this point, or you'll clarify that on Thursday? Sorry about that. All right.
Usually three skips.
I know. I just thought I would make it feel better. Surprise, Mary Allison. All right. Item I, approve/disapprove the appointment of one individual to the Grant County Lodgers Tax Committee. You have letters of interest from Michael Bersey, John Texas, and Victoria Chick. Those letters are, I believe, were emailed to you, and they're also in your books. Item J, approve/disapprove 2017 State Fire Protection Fund applications for the following volunteer fire departments. You have applications from Cliff Hila, Fort Baird, Grant County, Lower Membras, Pinos Altos, San Rita, Sapiro Creek, Tyrone, Upper Membras, and Whiskey Creek. Moving on to contact and agreements. Item K, approve/disapprove Agreement A16-14, Intergovernmental Services Agreement between the Department of Finance and Administration and the County of Grant for Behavioral Health for Prisoners. What this is, there was a $100,000 appropriation that was in, not this session, but the previous session. It was a tri-county initiative that Zimmerman put in the budget. Anyways, it kind of got changed around and moved into DFA. They didn't really know what to do with it, so they've been sitting on it for quite some time. They released an RFP-type questionnaire for counties. We were lucky enough to receive $20,000 to go towards what we've already, we already have a pilot program for the inmate support program, which I think you all are aware of. And so, what we will do, is our intent to use this $20,000 to expand that program farther than what we would have been able to do currently. And currently, we're working off of $20,000, $10,000 from the Town and Service City, and then $10,000 from the county. So, this will allow us to double the services that we're providing. That's the intent of that. Item L, approve/disapprove Agreement A16-15, Amendment One for the Direct Purchase of Service of Endure Agreement between North Central New Mexico Economic Development District and the Senior Programs. These are adjusting the unit costs. Next item are bids. Item M, approve/disapprove bid IFB B-15-11, Grant County Managers Office renovations. These renovations are necessary to accommodate the two new commissioner positions, so we'll be constructing some new offices, moving electrical HVAC, and some minor painting. And we had three responses to that bid. The apparent low bidder is whole reconstruction of Silver City, New Mexico, in the amount of $44,442. We had submittals from Sacatone Construction as well as Stoven Construction, but whole reconstruction is the apparent low bidder.
Right, you did.
By a lot. Next session, resolutions. Item N, approve/disapprove Resolution R16-18, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement and intercept agreement by and between Grant County, New Mexico, and the New Mexico Finance Authority to pay principal amount of $403,684 for the purpose of financing the cost of planning, designing, and constructing a new fire station for the Pinos Altos Volunteer Fire Department. Item O, approve/disapprove Resolution R16-19, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement and intercept agreement by and between Grant County, New Mexico, and the New Mexico Finance Authority to pay a principal amount of $198,975 for the purpose of financing the cost of purchasing and equipping a new wildland interface fire engine for the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department. And both of these loans are paid back with state fire funds.
Okay. Thank you very much, Charlene. Anybody having questions on the agenda for Thursday? Okay. So, at this time, we'll move into county reports, but before I do, I think there may be a member of the press that maybe has an announcement that he needs to make, Ben? Do you have any announcements you need to tell us about? I mean, you've been coming around here now for five years, and you're not going to tell us the big news?
Or do we have breaking news? Do we have to make the break?
Maybe he don't know. You just want to leave personal, personal? That's fine.
Well, for now. That's not what you tell us when you ask for a story. I'm the director, right? I, I...
That's all right. That's all right. Okay, we'll move on to... Is that right?
No, I'm sleuthing.
Where are you going, Randall? Tell us. Stand up and tell us.
Just go back to Arkansas, El Grande.
Okay.
Yep.
I will miss you, Randall. Is this your last meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday will be your last meeting? All right.
Thank you much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Okay, so we'll start with Brian. I'm interested in knowing about this nursing shortage, to see if you're feeling the same thing.
Yes.
I think you might be.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. And we'll get to nursing shortage. Want to do an update on the finances first for Heal Regional Medical Center, and this will be as of end of February. We have not reported our end of March to the board yet, so that'll come to the Commissioners next month. But as of end of February, our bottom line for that month was a negative $141,000. We've had several months of a negative bottom line, which we've been reporting to our board and the Commissioners. It's not expected. We've mentioned multiple times that this is a huge investment year for Heal Regional, and we are very confident that when we come out of the other side of these next several months, that we'll begin to get back on track on a monthly basis. We have some major projects going on that we've spoke about, complete reengineering of our entire revenue cycle, very complicated process in healthcare, and we're spending significant sums of money, as we've said in the past, bringing in outside expertise to help us reengineer our revenue cycle, as opposed to outsourcing that revenue cycle and incurring loss of jobs, loss of local jobs. So, it's an investment in our organization, an investment in our caregivers, and we think it's well worth it. But it most certainly comes at a price temporarily as we do this reengineering. We're also spending significant amounts of money, as we've talked about over this last year, on our electronic health record, this massive EHR upgrade of our entire organization. But the good news on that is it is coming to an end, we hope, and we very much hope. We have a go-live date of July 1. That project probably includes 200 people in our organization. It's the biggest project in our recent history. We have to pull some of our caregivers off the floor to support building modules for this electronic health record. Some of these are nurses, and that causes us to have to replace them with travelers. So, besides the shortage that everybody's experiencing in nursing and other professions, we also have this huge project going on that leaves us even further short-staffed, and we need to backfill those staff with travelers. So, we have a lot of things that are contributing to that negative $144,000 bottom line for the month that in the, over the next several months are going to resolve, and those funds will then be able to be pulled back from those projects and contribute towards our bottom line. So, we're very confident that that will resolve over the next several months. Our physician practice growth, Heal Regional, has been supporting our physicians kind of differently over the last couple of years. We've talked about in healthcare reform, it's increasingly difficult for physicians to make it, as they historically have in their private practices. More and more physicians are coming to the hospital for partnerships, so our practice network continues to grow. And of late, due to Dr. Sparks' pending retirement in August, we have been able to recruit a new ENT. uh, recruit a new ENT doctor who's going to start on or about August first. His name is Dr. Gilletteau, who came and interviewed and spoke to all of our local docs, and, and we're very happy that, um, that this physician will be joining our community, and will take over Dr. Sparks' practice, uh, as a Heal Regional-employed physician, but will essentially, um, dovetail right into her work. Our construction update, we're starting the RFP process for the archi- the specific architectural drawings for our labor and delivery and our OR recovery room space. And we've talked about that a little bit in the past, that may be an eight to ten million dollar project, so we'll nail that down with the architectural work, and then we'll be determining finances. Uh, we, we still currently, although we had a negative bottom line for the month and for the year, we're at about one point one negative bottom line, we still have, uh, over twenty-six million dollars in cash in the bank, uh, that we may use to either partially or totally fund that project, depending where it comes in. And of course, we'll be updating, uh, you all about that. Uh, the other night, item of note, we were talking about it earlier, challenges with Medicaid, this eighty-eight million dollar Medicaid shortfall. You know, there's been some good things, uh, with regards to Medicaid expansion. We have more New Mexicans with insurance, uh, but due to all the factors that Senator Morales has talked about, there's a shortfall in Medicaid and they have to make it up somewhere. And their plan is, their proposed plan, starting July one, is they're going to decrease the hospital payments for Medicaid about five percent, and, on the inpatient side, and about three percent on the outpatient side. That's about a, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars more that they'll, that, that we will not receive reimbursement. So it's the same equation. Reimbursement continues to go down, costs continue to go up. It's extremely challenging in this environment, but we're still very confident with the strategic, uh, plan that we have in place. We just had a strategic planning meeting with our board, uh, about two weeks ago, and very, uh, very confident in moving forward that we're going to continue to be positioned to serve this community well and continue to grow, uh, even in this challenging environment. And my last item is just a thanks out to our, our legislators and their support of Heal Regional in this past legislative session. They were able to secure a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in capital outlay for us that we're going to use to fund, partially fund, a portable X-ray unit, uh, in our hospital that, uh, is, is of need. The, this, this portable X-ray unit helps us to, for people that are really sick that can't make the trip, you know, on a gurney to X-ray, helps us to be able to get out to the floor very quickly, do the, do the study, and electronically, uh, send those results to our radiologist, and who can interpret them and get those results to the treating physician as soon as possible, so we can initiate treatment as soon as possible. So we, we thank our legislators very much. And with that, I'd stand for questions.
Any questions?
Comment, you know, uh, as you may or may not know with Tucasa, we're now in the part where we're pulling together the different parties that we would be working with, and we're calling it the flow chart. We're set up with the judges, we're set up now with law enforcement, we'll be having our meetings, and we really appreciate, and then we, in the past, we've always got your support, how the medical part, particularly the, the hospital, will fit in, in bringing patients from your facility into Tucasa, and so we'll be talking to you soon about that. And, and I thought the best thing would be just talk to you first before we talk to anyone else, and so we'll be doing that.
Yeah, we'll make sure we get the.
Thank you very much for your, so, you guys have been great support to us, so thank you very much.
It's a great project, and we appreciate you.
Thanks, Brian.
Appreciate it.
That's gotta be the biggest thing. I mean, well, just two years ago, we took such a big hit from the state through Medicaid, and now we're taking this hit, and it's just an onslaught of, of, ever since Obamacare's actually come in, it's not been better, it's been worse. So I don't, I don't know if it's better for, for the people out there either.
Is that there was just in the news media, about forty-eight percent of the people who stay in New Mexico is on Medicaid?
Yeah. It's a big challenge.
There's a matter of issue there.
Yes. It has increased enrollment, so we have more people covered, but now the challenge is how do we, how do we continue to?
But they're paying less for it.
Yes.
You got more people covered, but we're paying less. When, when we had the old agency fund, you were made whole every year. And you're not being made whole by any means now.
That, that is true. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, Mike.
Chairman, Commissioner, members, respectfully submit my report for March twelfth through April fifteenth. Item number one, um, the status continues, remains the same. Item number two, we currently have no vacancies at the, uh, detention center. Uh, item number three, um, the assessment that also continues, uh, the status remains the same. Item number four, on training update, uh, we sent Sergeant Galindo and Corporal Radikas to a controlled force training, train the trainer course on oscurusis, and this is just another continuation of improving our training program at the detention center. And we're trying to get as many train the trainers that we can, so we can conduct our own in-house training for all the detention officers at the facility. Item number five, on our intervention, uh, uh, as Commissioner, as, uh, Manager Hall mentioned, uh, on the inmate support program, there was some money, um, that was awarded to Grant County and Luna County, and I just want to thank, um, Charlene for all your work. Um, she really went after this, and, um, she was, uh, I feel that she was really responsible for us being able to secure that money to continue on with the inmate support program. So thank you, ma'am, for that. Um, item number six, on our recognition program, we're still awaiting nominations for Employee of the Month. Item number seven, on our detention statistics, uh, the average daily population for this reporting period is sixty-six, eight more than last month. Our high, high population males is fifty-seven, which is two more than last month. Our high population females is twelve, one more than last month. Uh, currently there, as of April fifteenth, we had fifty-four inmates that were booked in the facility. The average length of stay for this reporting period is thirty-two point four six days. And our facilities report, um, again, I have you the, uh, ARC, uh, capacity report, and also the jail inmate confinement report, if you have any questions on those two reports.
Comments, ma'am? We just had yesterday about a three-hour meeting, uh, with the criminal justice reform policy, uh, within MAC, and one of our huge issues, uh, are we talking about, something that we're, that we're going to address further, maybe to the legislature, is the parole and, uh, probation violation folks that are in our, in our detention centers across the state. We're talking like a third of the New Mexico population in our detention centers are made up of these folks, and it's a tremendous amount of loss, and trying to figure out ways of, uh, trying to lure that, because those are folks that our citizens in Grant County have to pay for, they should be paid for, still citizens, but should be paid for by the state. And one of the things, one of the issues we're talking about is, is that the time that they remain in our centers, whether being transferred or to even have a hearing. And so we're trying to, uh, figure out different ways, and one of the things, and I don't know if, um, they'll be talking about it Thursday or not, the people from MAC that'll be here, and they may not have the time to do that. But anyway, what we're talking about is maybe working with the Supreme Court, uh, setting up some rules, so we can shorten that time, uh, so we'll get them out of our detention centers, so we don't have to be paying for that. And there were some other issues, and I'll sit down with you and we'll talk about them, some of the things that's, uh, on the horizon as far as your facility is concerned.
Mr. Hall, you're absolutely right, and what we've been trying to do at the detention centers around the state is we're trying to provide the managers with better statistics, uh, than the ones that we have been, because of the, the, uh, reporting requirements that the state had us doing. We would report on one day at the end of the year, in May, about how many of those probation and parole that we had for that particular day, which, um, very much skewed as far as how many that we hold for the entire year. So, um, we're gonna, uh, the detention facilities, they're trying to provide, and you can see in my report, um, on the bottom report on the parolees, uh, out of the fifty-six inmates that we had in the facility for the month, twenty of them were parole violations. So that's almost half of the population that we had in there are probation violations, and we're holding them for an extended length of time before they're able to go to court. So we absolutely need help from the state and legislature, providing funding to be able to recoup those costs that we're, we're incurring right now.
Really important now for you to keep those statistics really close to you, so if MAC does call, we'll have those, because that's an important one there, because that's even higher than the state, uh, more, and that's something that we need to work on. And one of the things we need to do, you know, like the detention center, we're still using it as a treatment center. Detention center is a detention center, it's not a treatment center. And once we get some centers going, like the Tucasa stuff, then we can start moving those folks out of your detention center, lower the numbers, and start doing, uh, do them a better job, and do our community a better job.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I'm absolutely.
And I know you're on that committee, so, I'm, I'm preaching to the choir here.
Yes, sir, and, uh, I'd like to thank Brian again, also for helping us at the hospital whenever we have institutes, uh, when we have inmates that need to be moved out. Um, he's always been receptive to helping us do that, so, um, I appreciate it. Thank you, Brian, again. Any more questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Now that, uh, the Town of Silver City is, is referring all the, I guess, criminal complaints and what have you over to the magistrate system, how is that affecting us at the jail?
We just did the billing for Silver City Police Department, it's considerably lower. Um, because of those costs, and because they're filing state charges on them, um, we don't, we're not able to re, to, to generate the, the billing that we had and bill the city, uh, Silver City Police Department, because they were charging under municipal charges, and we were able to bill the city for the incarceration cost. But with them going to the magistrate judge and billing on the state statutes, uh, we're not able to, uh, to bill for those costs. So it is, it has been considerably lower.
And everyone knows we never be, we're never able to get money out of the state for, for their prisoners, so, so it's a, it's a lose-lose for us, that's for sure.
It is, it is. Commissioner, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, the, the billing was considerably lower for Silver City.
Can you give us an approximate number?
No, sir, I don't have it with me now, but I can get it for you. I know that it was, it was con- very, very, very low. And, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, I, I just want, I just want, I wanted to know exactly what that number is, when?
I can get that for you, sir. In fact, we just submitted the billing, and I do have.
That's really hurting us.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, you know, I know it's a trickle effect now, so.
Yes, sir.
We gotta try and figure out what we can do with the city to, to help out.
I can get that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, item number eight, on our, our monthly arrests totals for March two thousand and sixteen, Silver City Police Department had eighty, um, individuals that they brought into the facility. Grant County Sheriff Department had twenty-two, New Mexico State Police had twenty-eight, Baird Police had fifteen, Santa Clara, nine, uh, Hurley had one, and New Mexico, uh, Western New Mexico University had zero. Item number nine, on our, uh, transports, we had twenty-five district court transports. We had, uh, twelve Division One magistrate, uh, transports. Division Two, we had two. Uh, Silver City Municipal Court, we had zero, um, Santa Clara, zero, and Baird, zero. And we had, uh, ten medical transports, and the total number of transports for this reporting period equals forty-nine. And on the probation violation, again, we had twenty-one, uh, individuals that are cosrared on, uh, charges for probation violation, there's twenty-one. We don't have any zero parole violations. Uh, the probation violation inmate awaiting transport for sentencing, uh, equals five right now that we have that are waiting to be sentenced to other facilities. Total inmates charged with warrants, arrests, again, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, those are the majority of the inmates that we're incarcerating. If you can see the total numbers, there's thirty-five, uh, the inmates that were charged under Fager, DePere, those types of warrants. And, uh, so the to- and the total number of special management inmates that we have currently in the, is four. The other thing that I just wanted to, I think it's very, really important, is, um, again, uh, Commissioner Hall, you mentioned this, but, um, the Tucasa Subcommittee has been, um, we've been meeting with, um, the providers, trying to get them all together and, and trying to improve the program. And, um, I was tasked with scheduling a law enforcement meeting, and it'll be held on, uh, the twenty-seventh, April twenty-seventh, at four o'clock here in the red room. And the purpose of that is to gather the law enforcement off, uh, officials, uh, in the county to get them together, so they will know what's happening with Tucasa, and we'll get their input, so we can improve our program at four o'clock. Commissioner, yes, sir. And we'll also have, uh, representative from Hidalgo Medical Services, um, at the meeting. Um, so, um, just to put that, um, I contacted, um, the sheriff and some of the other, um, law enforcement officials, and they've agreed to attend that meeting. And one more, um, message that I'd like to, I think is very important, is, um, again, Hidalgo Medical Services contacted me, and they're doing a child prevention, uh, a child abuse prevention program. Uh, it's going to be tonight from six to eight o'clock. And I've been also contacting law enforcement officials in the county to get them there, because I think it's really important that, um, we have some representation there on, this is a very, very serious, uh, very serious matter, so they're going to put on this program, and, uh, they're going to provide food. So, uh, that's my report.
This is it.
So that's our report, sir, if you have any questions.
Do you know where that meeting's going to be?
It's going, yes, sir, it's going to be at the Hidalgo Medical Services on Pope Street, and it'll be done at the basement, I believe they have a community meeting room there.
So in the new building?
Yes, sir.
In the new building, down in the basement?
Down there, yes, sir.
Okay, I didn't know exactly where it's going to be. And then, you know, a spin-off from that, then, Penny Park on the twenty-third, they're having, uh, at noon, uh, they're having a, a, I don't know what you would call it, um, a get-together for the abuse of children and stuff, and, uh, Pilar is in charge, and, and I'll be involved in that, and talk, so.
You have any questions?
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
One, one question, and I don't know if it's for you or Commissioner Hall, but the state shortfall, still two and a half, two million, two and a half million on parolee violators, is that where we're at?
Uh-huh.
That's a lot of money. I don't know about our portion of that, but we've done that. We need it. So, Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, we pulled off of that Loma Verde project for now. Uh, we do have, all the roads are in great shape over there now, they can get in and out of there, they're all, they're all happy, and Hurley asking me to put in speed on the side, I do.
There's always an unattended consequence, right?
We still gotta get the six inches of base course, we still need to lay, but we probably won't get back over there till probably July. I pulled off of there, so we can get back over there on Rosedale Road. Uh, a bid opening for that project is Thursday, and so I need to get everything done, that the county needs to get done over there before, uh, my contractor moves in over there. Other than that, we're, we're patching this week, too. Uh, we're out-patching today to get caught up on some of these pathways, but our main concentration will be over there at Rosedale. I don't think that's a paving contract, whoever gets the bid, I don't think they'll end up paving probably till around the end of June, first of July. So hopefully that'll give me a chance to get in there, get my chips done before that. On the other, and that's business as usual, done.
Any questions, Earl? I just want to say, I always appreciate how quickly you get on something when they call you, and, uh, that really makes a difference to the public when they call and have a question about something, and, and you go deal with it right away, I appreciate it.
Uh, I'd like to thank my guys down there, they, they really busted their hump, told they're on Loma Verde, so they knew that we needed to hurry up and get that done as quick as possible.
Just one comment, is that? And I always like to bring it up, and I know that we're short here, but Wind Canyon, Ropes, and probably Charlene, is there any movement on that, or where we're at on that?
Ray's still doing all of his background research.
Ray's working on it? Okay, you got a background?
You know, he has to look into each and every one of the teams and make sure that their person's correct.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, just wanted to let you guys know, on Thursday, I'll have my, um, staff bring in some of the students from the schools that participated in our DARE program this year, just to recognize them, and it'll be done during public input, shouldn't take that long. Uh, we're just going to have them recognized, um, just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
You gonna have your eye in here?
Don't plan on it, but never know, never know, too. Um, as you all are aware, we've been extremely busy dealing with a lot of issues going on in the county. Um, I just want to thank my staff for keeping up with, uh, what's going on, being that we're shorthanded, we're still being able to get things done and, and still do extra activities. Uh, this weekend, we did have the proms for the high schools, um, good to report, nothing happened, it was fairly quiet, kids actually enjoyed it, had a good time, no major issues with it. And I just, like I say, I want to, uh, thank my staff for what they're doing and continue to do. Um, being shorthanded, it, it puts a lot of strain and stress on them, uh, and so we're, we're trying to work with what we have. I have hired two, two, um, employees from two of the municipalities, which helps us, but then it really doesn't help us, because then we're covering for them, because they're shorthanded, so, I mean, we're stealing from Peter to pay Paul, and, and, uh, it's helping us in a sense, but, but it's making our job a little bit tougher, because now we're covering for them, but, you know, I'm just happy to report that I was able to hire a couple, and we're still looking for more, so. Other than that, I have nothing else to report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Chair? No, just a comment, you know, one of the things we discussed yesterday at that meeting, uh, was, first of all, looking at, uh, supporting some statutes, working on your sex offender registration, and, and it's my understanding from listening to the other sheriffs at that meeting, that it's, it's a huge issue, in that it's, it's a. it's a huge issue in that it's a real drain on your resources to do it correctly and there's, and there's statutes out there and rules now that require you to do certain things and it pulls a lot of people off the street. And so we're working, we're looking at some possible, some legislation there. So through your affiliate, you may want to keep close contact with them. They're mixed in Grant County, but in fact, you guys are now, there's fifty in the county that you're watching at this time. And they're going from hard copy to electronic, and I don't know if you're there yet or not. Are you or?
Yes, we are.
You are? You're already electronic, that's good. Because a lot of the sheriff's offices are not, so I congratulate you for doing that. Makes me feel good. The other thing that we're working on is the Forfeiture Act. It has been a real terrible thing as far as the sheriff's offices are concerned, and so we're looking at some legislation on that also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall. That is correct in regards to the sex offenders, that is a, that should be an assignment for an individual because it is a full-time job. And I do have two individuals that are working on it. The state does have a lot of mandates and requirements, but they do not provide any funding for it. So it's all on the sheriff's office to provide the services and ensure that these individuals are following the rules that are in place for them in registering, verifying their addresses. It's a lot of, it's a full-time job and, you know, I thank the two individuals that are doing it for doing it. It does take the manpower off the street and their other duties that they have. But, you know, we have to do it, it's a state mandate, so.
In fact, that one statute, I think it was 2013, where they lessen your responsibility, took some people off of there that's mandated in as far as armed robberies and also, what was the other kidnapping, where there's no sexual thing involved in it and no, shown of no intent. And so they've taken them off. I guess you're aware of that.
Yes, we are, yes. Thank you for the, for the support and hopefully, eventually, sometime soon, maybe the state will pitch in some money for it. But it is a full-time job.
Supposedly, yeah. And I think they've put some money to the state police. They're going to have to either do it, that's what we talked about, either have to do it or the state can do it. And I don't think they want to do that.
Right. I would recommend the state take it on.
No, I would too.
Thank you.
How do they handle the state police, right?
That's right.
Chair, I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
After reading in the paper about the drug test force evidence issue down in Demings, is that going to affect your office at all?
Actually, I, I know we're responding to what was put out. There's a lot more to it than what was actually put out, but I do have one agent that's in the task force, and I don't know what direction we're going to head with it at the moment.
I didn't know if you were affected at all, but I'll be getting in contact with you and keeping up.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, Earl?
Good morning, Chief Assessor. Good morning, Chairman, County Commissioners, County Manager, and our Attorney, elected officials. For starters, I want to thank Grant County property owners to allow me to be their county assessor. The momentum that I have in my office has been very positive and it really gives me a great feeling that I could be actually fair and equitable on my values. And now that I have a staff, we're really working quite diligent at this moment. I do thank my staff. They've been working very hard. You walk in my office, nine times out of ten, they're on the field doing their appraisals. Good news, we went to San Deville County to take a course. It was the income, it was the fundamentals of real estate appraisers. And Matthew Myers passed the course with a ninety-six. I was very happy about that because he does all my sales analysis. Ronnie Gary passed his with a ninety-two. And they push a whole semester class in one week and then you take a four, a four-hour exam after that. It takes four courses to become a New Mexico certified appraiser's. And I'm so glad that I'm investing my time, my resources, to my employees. This week, actually, the assessors have an affiliate in Roswell and we're going to discuss some resolutions and I'm going to be sending a representative because I'm really busy on trying to get this reappraisal off the ground and that's going to take a lot of, a lot of work. And that's going to be the presentation this next Thursday. I was counting how many reapraisals I've been involved in, physical and in-house reapraisals, and it's close to nine reapraisals. And I want to use the term updates instead of reapraisals. July, I'm also sending some other employees. My chief deputy is going to go take the income approach evaluation, that's course two. And Tracy Burns said I use her as also an appraiser, even though she's my mapper, and taking course one, fundamentals of real estate appraising. And my newest employee, her name is Lorraine Zunich, and she has been a blessing due to the fact on the data entry, and I'm also going to use her as an appraiser, so I'm sending her off also in July. Priority one with the realtors, and I've spent some time talking to them due to the fact that our internet service, it's not the county's problem, it's actually our Eagle Assessor program. What happens is when you get into the property search, it actually stays spinning for a minute, two minutes, and I want to get that fixed and that's going to be my priority. And I am also going to create a couple of hyperlinks so we can have a better parcel mapping on our internet. So that's, like I said, realtors be patient with me and I'm on that more than anything else. It's taken me a year and a half just to get back on my feet and I'm very grateful that I have the help of our county manager. I really appreciate her more than anything else. For 2017, we are going to have an update, our reappraisal. And starting off with a bang, I've already been to Representative Hall's house and picked up quite a lot of value there.
No, 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 no. You put me on my sick bed.
There you go. The reappraisal.
I was pretty sure that you didn't move in. I walked in there.
I got no perks on that, okay? So that's how we pretty much started with our, we're updating our reappraisal and it's going to be for the 2017 reappraisal. Notices of valuations, anytime anybody wants to protest, you have until the second of May. We've had a handful of protests and I really, I don't mind due to the fact that, so I can see where my values are at, and you have until the second of May to contest your valuation. Also, if you have any head of household, veteran exemption, sixty-five-year-old or freeze, hundred percent disabled, that's pretty much the last day to do all that. And the reason why is once I send off my certifications, I pretty much lock in all my values and I really don't really want to mess with values because I'm trying to stay as true as I can on my values. Commissioner Caston, Chairman, I'm so glad that we had a small discussion about copper production and it looks very good and you were right. The numbers did come positive and hopefully that helped out the county.
I wasn't right, I just got good information from you.
I know, I was, and I was calling from all, from all angles, I find, and you know, and I've already discussed it with our county manager. And at this moment, I'm also doing the projections for the 2016 valuation and, you know, the budgeting. And I have some really good projections, you'll hear Thursday, about this reappraisal and I think it's going to be very positive. And I do stand for questions if, at this moment.
But you know, it won't matter what the actual copper projection is because once we send it up to DFA, they'll make us lower it again.
I know, I know. It's the nature of the beast and, like I said, this reappraisal is really going to help out, you know, with the county. And I've been out talking to the community and I'm just trying to make the pie bigger. That's what I'm trying to do. And we are having issues right now with the state of New Mexico with our building permits and I'm, I think I'm going to make a couple of calls and, you know, kick that anthill because we haven't received our permits for the last four or five months and it is a problem.
From CID?
Yes, that is correct, sir.
They got a new department head too, don't they?
Yep. And same with, with the manufactured homes, for them to inspect these manufactured homes with their, their changing inspectors, so I got to be on top of that also. But it's real busy. Let me tell you, my office has been real busy and I'm kind of excited to start off this reappraisal and we'll probably start off in May.
Thank you very much.
Assessor, I'd like to thank you for attending our copper trails meeting. I think this would be great.
That was great, Commissioner.
Connecting Baird and Santa Clara through a trail system is going to be really good and eventually, hopefully, we can have that trail going all the way to Pinos Altos. Hopefully, we can get together and I was hoping that you could head the county trail plan. And I know there's monies out there for, for that plan and hopefully you can help us out and take charge on that.
Commissioner Reynolds, I'm so glad you brought that up because we did the Continental Divide Second Annual, I went in and hosted. The MC on Friday was packed. We spoke about the Grant County Trails, not just only the Continental Divide. I chaired the Grant County Trails Group and it was such a success, even though Saturday was colder than you can imagine. I wouldn't be, want to be playing golf that day looking at somebody. But it was cold, we had a good success, and then Sunday, we actually hiked up to Gomez Peak and it was one of the, you know, for being the second annuals, there was some, some really good sponsors and matter of fact, they were giving out fast shoes and I was talking to Mary Alice about that. Literally, they're a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollar shoes and they gave away about sixty pairs. And I'm in love with them, I got to buy me another pair. But please come and join us and hike one of these days for not only the Grant County but also the Continental Divide.
You just invested in that company as well.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Treasurer?
Hey, this morning.
Good.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First off, I'd like to thank our county manager, Charlene Webb. She assisted us a little bit in getting some equipment for our office. We shuffled around our budget a little bit and we've gotten much-needed bigger screens and so on and so forth for our computers that is really getting to be a challenge with our stuff that we do and additional things that we've been doing. So thank you for your assistance and then just wanted to let you know that the two girls in our office attended the NMAC New Mexico Edge classes. Banji Gonzalez is two classes and Liz Hernandez is one class away from being certified treasurer official to the state of New Mexico. And we're hoping that in June, for the, in the Hobbs meeting that we have there, the conference that's being held in Hobbs, that they'll be able to finish their certifications and be actually graduating there at that. We're still waiting to see if New Mexico Edge will be able to provide those two classes that Banji needs and the one that Liz needs for them to be able to graduate at that session. Back in February was my last report that I gave you guys and I told you then that we were kind of at the slow point of our collections and reflected was in, in the report that I submitted from February to March that I was not able to attend. We had only received for the county share sixty-three thousand dollars during that month from February to March. And now reflected from March to April, we've received almost five times the amount we've collected for the county, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-one cents during that period. So it's, we're backed up in the busy time. Currently, we have a team from Property Tax Division in our office that's been in there for a week and a half and they're still working on the 2012 delinquencies. So they have been out red tagging, so apparently we're going to have another tax sale, probably, well, they have, they have to announce when, we have no idea, but that's what they're preparing for, so they are, they are there, so we'll have to see what, what comes of it. And also, we have the deadline, May the tenth, for the second half of 2015 property taxes that we need to make the public aware. We put out the notices and they'll be in the, in the newspapers announcing the deadline and we have had pretty good response so far. And like I said, we're, we're up to sixty-nine point zero eight percent collections and...
What was the dates?
The dates from the deadline?
Tenth of May.
Tenth of May, okay, thank you.
So, and that's to pay the, the second half without penalty and interest, so after that, it continues to, it will accumulate or accrue penalty and interest at one percent a month. We are hoping that we'll have a very good collection time between now and, and May the tenth. We have gotten a lot of calls. Every time we put that little ad in the paper, we get kind of a little rush and so on, so we, we do advertise for three weeks to let them know. And, you know, if they have any questions at any time, if people have not received their notice or they've lost their notice, they'll just give us a call and we'll help you out, let you know where you're, where you stand. We, we're going to start tracking to see, because it seems like we're getting a bigger percentage of people paying once a year in November. And that really helps the county with the money upfront, but it makes it hard towards the end of the, of the tax period because then we're, we have less to collect. So outstanding right now, we have one point eight million dollars till to collect between now and May, so we'll see how that goes along, so. And the only other thing I have to say is that I was fortunate enough to be able to sign up to be the treasurer for the county for the next four years and apparently I'm, the opinion is that I'm doing a good job, so nobody decided to run against me. So I look forward to serving the community for the next four years and continue the upgrades and stuff that we're doing in the office. And if you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, do have a couple of dates coming up in May. May tenth, voter registration closes. You have until that date to either register to vote or update any information for the upcoming June seventh primary. Also on May tenth, absentee voting begins here in our office and that's the day we start mailing out absentee ballots to individuals that have already sent in applications to our office. May twenty-first, early voting begins at the Baird Community Center and that, they're going to be open on Saturday, which is the twenty-first, and their hours are going to be nine to six. And they'll be voting there the final two weeks of May, Tuesday through Saturday, nine to six. So other than that, I really don't have anything else. Unless you guys have any questions for me.
Questions? Now, the people that we, we decided to mail ballots to out in the outlying areas, when will those ballots go out?
May tenth.
May tenth.
I'm sorry, I didn't mail them. May tenth.
Have had a little bit of pushback from Hatchita. Imagine you probably have to.
A little bit, yes, sir.
But you can't send somebody down, there's three people all day long for the amount of money we can mail. We can't ever one of them.
Right. We've had some conversations with them and I don't think that they fully realize that it's not just having a polling location, it's fuel, it's overtime. A lot goes into sending someone all the way down there. You know, and they, they've always made, they make it known that, well, I have to put gas to go all the way up there. Well, we have to put gas also to go down there as well, so it's...
Well, then they're going to be mailed about.
They're going to be mailed about.
They'll have to ballot and mail it back.
Correct. You know, we've had some conversations and yes, every, anytime a ballot leaves our office and it's returned, they do get counted. I don't know where, some individuals have gotten the idea that absentee ballots aren't counted unless it's a close race or some, something like that, but every, every vote is counted. So, you know, anybody that has any, you know, issues with it can always, you know, we welcome them to our office so they can look at the process and see how it's done. That way, you know, we can help them understand how the process goes.
Many checks and balances.
Many, many, many.
At the very end, you have people come in and verify that.
That is correct.
I used to do it.
Okay, thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Charlene, you got anything?
Just a few things. As far as the budget, it's moving along. Linda is keying it into Tyler today and we will... Linda is keying it into Tyler today, and we will schedule meetings with the department heads this week and go over their budgets, and then she and I will sit down and meet with each one of you individually to go over it, and it's scheduled for your approval at your meeting in, in May. The animal control ordinance, that's currently under review by our attorney. We have, we'll have, I know, you know, Senator Morales brought up the ICIP, there's a training in Deming tomorrow. We have probably three or four representatives from the counties from various departments attending that training. The Cameron Creek Burn, I know you asked me about that yesterday, they had a briefing this morning, that's up, that's moving along beyond schedule to, to happen this week.
Got a radio on Friday? That took it out. House is safe again.
And on Thursday, Dave Holstein from the Forest Service will be here to give his bioses and weather report. The vacant planning director position will close this Friday, and I will review applicants and begin the background checks and then set up interviews.
How many applicants have?
I haven't even looked, because it usually depresses me. Also, I'm kind of on a positive note, in, in the current fiscal year budget, we had budgeted some funds to upgrade the equipment in this, this room, so you're not having to pass the microphone down, and sometimes they work, sometimes they don't, so some of that equipment, well, Angela's in the process of ordering that equipment now, and Ben will install that, so we're looking forward to this being a little more user-friendly. Other than that, that's about it.
Anybody have anything else? Want to take a motion to adjourn?
Sure. Like it.
All over the papers.
Bye, Hal.